I'm going to declare the meeting open. Okay. This is a public hearing. From the applicant, Eric Dakota, owner of Deek Fuel, requesting a variance from Article 2 A1 of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit development of a vacant lot in the commercial industrial zone with a two-car garage and office within 100 feet from the rear property boundary line while maintaining 100 feet from all the property lines. The property is located at 240 Old Turnpike Road in Nottinghamshire, which is Route 4, and is identified as tax map 16 lot 36, sub lot A. So I'm your case to the board, and then the board will have time to ask you questions. And if there are any, if there's any opposition, I don't see anybody else here, so I can't imagine there will be any unless Joanna has received some written communication. Have you joined up?
No, I have not.
She doesn't appear to hear me. Can the rest of you hear me? Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
You froze up for a minute, but now you're good.
Raylene is joining us.
Yeah, Raylene is here.
Raylene is here?
Yes.
Yes, I am on.
Okay, great. So we're just about, Mr. Frankowitz is going to present for the owner. And I just read the case. I hope you've read it on the packet that Joanna sent us.
I did read it.
Documents. Make so much noise. I'm turning the floor over to Mr. Frankowitz to present the case to the board.
Good evening. Joanna, can you let me share my screen? I'll put the camera off. I think I can.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think that I've done anything different. I'm muting everybody except for Mr. Frankowitz. If that's okay, so that there's no more background noise.
My dogs bark, you won't hear it.
Okay, everybody is muted except for Mr. Frankowitz.
I am trying to get to the plan. Can anybody see that plan? No.
Your screen is showing us that you are wanting to share something, but it's not up yet. Try again after you've clicked it open. There you go.
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants. Sorry about the picture. I'm on vacation, actually, and this is a photo of the plan. I didn't have a copy of PDF. So I'll describe it the best I can. I think you guys have plans in front of you. Mr. Dakota, what he is proposing is a, he owns an oil business. He's going to have two trucks. And there's going to be a small two-bay garage. They'll house those trucks after deliveries. And then this section over here is a small office or administration for the business. The site is located just past the town line of Northwood in Nottingham, headed east on Route 4. It's a vacant parcel. As you see, there's wetlands on both sides, and he's trying to develop just in the middle. And the variance is for 100-foot setback from this back property line. And we're holding the 100-foot front property line, and then we're 100 or more from both of the side property lines. The reason for that is if we held 100 feet in the back, we'd have just under 30 feet of usable land. It really doesn't, doesn't work for the septic and for the structure. And make it undevelopable. So far, we've gotten a New Hampshire DOT highway access permit for the location of the driveway. We've gone to the planning board for a preliminary meeting. And the building inspector wrote the denial letter for the 100-foot setback to the back. What we're proposing, the location, one side is 57.9 feet from the back property line. And the other side to the east is 59.2. Mr. Dakota already has a building, so that we know that's going to be the size of the building and hopefully the location of the building. I could walk through the zoning criteria if you like at this point, or however you want to.
I have a question, just for clarification, something you just said. Did you say that there is currently a building on the site?
No, no, there's, there's no building on the site. It's a vacant site. What I said is Mr. Dakota has been working on the property for a while. He bought the building. So we know that that's the size of the building, so we're confident that by asking for this variance, it's going to be what he puts on that lot if he gets up.
Okay, so it's a modular building or a prefab building?
It's a steel structure building, so he's bought all the steel.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, I could walk through the variance criteria if you'd like.
Well, I had one question. I had one question. I walked in on the lot.
Yeah.
And you've got like, up on that hill, there's like a truck axle on one side driven to the ground with tape around it. And then over to the left, like looking from Route 4, over to the left, there's a a triangle stick. Looks like it says benchmark one or something. What does that in relationship to the front of the building, the back of the building?
If it's a benchmark, it would have nothing to do with the building. It would be just our survey locations.
Okay, but where would, in relationship to the building? Because it was very hard to tell where the back line was.
To be honest, I don't know. I don't have a plan showing what that, what you're talking about. The building, as you looked at the site, it was obvious it was a large hill.
Yeah, that was up, is it sitting right up on top of the hill?
As you look from Route 4 onto the site, it'll be just, just right of that hill a little bit, but it is digging into that hill, and that hill will be leveled out.
Okay, because they, because when you walk down the back, it's very hard to tell where, there's no real markings for the back property line, so.
Right. Yeah, if you, if you go to the west side of it, there's a rebar, but it is, it is tough out back.
Yeah, it's very hard to figure out, because I walked all the way to the back and now that place behind is the, that's an auto repair lot right behind there.
Correct. It's, I guess, Jam Automotive is what they call it.
Right, so that's, that's a commercial spot too, right?
Right.
Right, and a house, I assume.
Right, there's actually a multifamily on the tax card, it says, so.
Right. Okay, that was all my, my only question.
I don't know if the chair is talking. She's muted.
Are you talking, Bonnie?
Joanna, I think you may need to unmute, unmute Bonnie.
The screen with the map.
There you go.
Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted now, yeah.
Okay, somebody has to tell me how to get this back up. I am. I am. I don't see anything but people's faces. I don't see the screen where the map was. Joanna, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
How do I get back to that? It just kind of disappeared on me. Oh, maybe over here. Span the screen with video. Nope. Then I got the little tiny map. Wow, then just me. Maybe I'm making it bigger, but I still, I can't see people and the process. Don't know why. Like, all of a sudden, it just disappeared, and there were only the squares with the participants.
So you don't see the screen shared?
I do not. Looking around, and maybe this is it. Maybe this is, but it's tiny. Right, I'm making it bigger.
Is your green share green? Your share screen green?
No. I mean, screen that, Mr. Frank. Wow, I don't know what's happening here. This has never happened in a Zoom meeting.
I don't know.
So I can see the map now, but the whole configuration of my Zoom screen has changed, and I can't see any of the people.
Okay.
Because I can either see the people or the screen. Thumbnail video, grid video. Sharing view and hide thumbnail video. Those seem to be my choices. I don't, none of them make particular sense.
I don't know. Is there something that you needed to see on the plan, though?
No, because I have a copy of it. But I was just going to ask if any members of the board had other questions. And I wanted to ask also, Mr. Frankowitz, is this going to be a business and a residence? Is that?
No, it's, it's proposed to be just a two-bay garage, the store, the trucks, and then a small office to the right.
So.
As you look from the site.
This is a commercial zone, yes?
It's a commercial zone, yes. Commercial industrial.
Tell me why you need a variance.
The 100-foot setback to the rear property line in the commercial zone. Commercial setbacks are 100, industrials 150. This is a commercial use, so we need to have a setback to all property lines 100 feet. We're asking for a variance to the back property line.
And what's on the back property? Is that vacant land?
No, it is Jam Automotive in a multifamily residence.
Building. How many, how many units in that, more or less, you know, the two, three?
I don't, I don't have that information. I just remember what I wrote in my argument for the variance was that it was a multifamily.
I don't have the document in front of me. I just have the map that you gave us. What is the distance between Route 4 or the property line next to Route 4 and the piece of property? And
It's on.
Site of the
It's on Route 4.
Right.
It's on Route 4.
Yes, but what, how far back is it from Route 4?
It's over, it's over 100 feet. We're keep it, we're maintaining that setback from Route 4 and the neighbors from the east and the west.
And the reason for that is?
What do you mean?
Well, if, if there's more than 100 feet from the property line to the building on the, what is it, the, the north side? And it's less on the south side. It seems to be, can it, can the building be moved? Is there some restriction that the building can't be moved, so that's 100 on each side if the total is 300 feet?
Yeah, like I said at the beginning, so I can go around the property. That's the front, the length along Route 4 is 310 feet.
Right.
The rear property line is 395. The side, one side is 241, and one is 257.
Right.
But obviously, that's at an angle, so it's a little different. If you do 100 feet from both property lines, the front and the back, like I said at the beginning, we have under 30 feet between the two setbacks, which is really unusable. The way the topography is on the site, it would push it more towards the front. This is really kind of the best location for it, and we wanted to maintain the front and the side setbacks. And be able to get the parking and everything on kind of the top of the knoll. The site is, is a difficult site in the placement where we can get everything kind of on top of the knoll is right where it is.
Okay, I did, I just got back from being out of town, so I didn't look at the property. So your argument is not that the property distance doesn't allow for the 100-foot setback is the topography of the piece of property that, that creates the problem.
No, it's probably a little both, but mainly the property, because like I said, if we kept 100 from the back, we're under 130 feet between the front and the rear setback lines, which is really unusable for this lot. So it's the
I have a question. Can you tell us how far that is from the North River? I mean, it's right on the edge of the property, isn't it?
Well, it is. It's a non-jurisdictional part of the North River. I don't have a scale with me. I would say it's at least a couple hundred feet.
So is it wise to put an oil business in the middle of wetlands, a couple hundred feet from a river? I mean, that doesn't seem to be too smart.
Well, we're not, there's no storage of oil on site.
So it won't be any oil in these trucks? No oil?
Then Eric could speak better, but the way I understand it is they leave in the morning, go fill up in Newington, go deliver all their oil during the day, and then bring back empty trucks at night.
So this is just a storage facility for the trucks?
Yes.
And an office.
And an office. I understand the office, but it's really basically a garage for the trucks.
Correct.
Questions?
Just a general question. If we were to pass a variance, could we just have a condition that the trucks have to be empty of oil when they're on that site? I mean, just to protect the wetlands and the environment? Is that a reasonable condition we can add? Would there be any objection to that by the owner? Just trying to protect the river and the wetlands.
Well, I, I don't think it's necessary, but.
No, there's a spill, you know, once again, we gotta make sure public interest is protected.
You know how many oil trucks go up Route 4 daily?
Yeah, they're all helping to destroy the planet, but that's another discussion.
Well, let's
We're worried about the North River and the wetlands, you know, our job is to protect those.
Mr. Frankowitz, can you hear?
I can hear. I'd like to have Eric answer, or if, if that's something that would affect his business plan, or, or if that's
That would be good, too. Unfortunately, I don't see Mr. Dakota on anymore. I don't know what happened. Can we have him go through the? Can we have the gentleman go through the five criteria right now, so we can keep moving?
We're not stopping. We were just hoping to get an answer from the owner, who apparently is no longer on. And if there are no further questions, yes, I will ask Mr. Frankowitz, too.
What, what do we do with the current question?
He's not here to
Right, so do we? Okay, I just need to know, are we assuming that he will provide us with that answer at some point?
He's trying to get back on, right?
Or are we ignoring it?
My comment is if we were to proceed, when the motion came to approve or whatever, I would suggest an amendment to approve it on the condition that no oil is stored on site. And it sounds like that's his normal business procedure, that he doesn't have oil in the trucks when they're on site, then he shouldn't have a problem with that. But I wouldn't want any oil stored on that site.
I think that's an unnecessary burden, because, you know, he's not, he might not come back with a completely empty truck every night, and, you know, that kind of restricts himself.
Well, we're not going to have somebody there checking his trucks every night, but I think if that's, that's the understanding, I'm hoping he is, being an honest businessman, he'll try to, you know, abide by it as good as he can. But, you know, he wants to put an oil business in the middle of some wetlands and up next to a river. He has to figure there's going to be a condition or two.
And anyone, can anyone say if he's getting back on or not? Are you in contact with him, Scott?
Yes, he just texted me, said he was trying to get back on.
I don't see, see him as on waiting yet, so as soon as I do see him pop up, I will definitely let him in.
No? Then why don't we proceed to the five criteria, and if he gets back on, then we can go back to that question.
Okay.
Okay, so Scott, do you want to take it up from here?
Yeah. Criteria one, the variance would not be contrary to public interest, because as the existing lot is within the commercial industrial zone, and the use is allowed within the commercial industrial zone. Number two, disparito, the ordinance is observed. By allowing a commercial use within the commercial industrial zone while maintaining 100 feet from the residential uses to the east of the property, the property to the south, which is the property we are requesting a variance to the setback to, is a mixed-use property to include an automotive garage, Jam Automotive. Criteria number three, substantial justice is done by allowing the owner to develop the property as a commercial use as allowed within the commercial industrial zone. The commercial industrial zone is all land within 1,000 feet of the right-of-way Route 4 and properties that also front on Route 4, which this property does. Criteria number five. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. The proposed use will not diminish surrounding properties as it is a commercial use within the commercial industrial zone. And there are a number of commercial uses in the area to include a garage, multifamily houses, restaurant, and a residential use to the east. 800-foot setback is being maintained. The property to the south, which fronts on Route 152, is Jam Automotive and multifamily on the tax card. Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. A, for purpose of this sub-paragraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. I, no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And if the 100-foot setback was maintained from the rear of the property line and subject, the subject property would be unbuildable as a parcel. As the parcel is 230 feet deep, leaving 30 feet as buildable area if the 100-foot setback was adhered to from the rear property and front property lines. Two, the purpose, the proposed use is a reasonable one. The property is surrounded by commercial and multi-use, multi-unit use, uses, and is allowed, is in allowed use within the commercial industrial zone. The purpose, the proposed use is low-traffic use and will adhere to all other regulations and ordinances.
Are there questions? I can't hear you, Joanna. It looks like you're talking.
Sorry. I wanted to inform you that Mr. Dakota is back on, and also it appears we may have a member of the public on as well.
Terrific.
No, that person went away. Never mind.
So if I can address Mr. Dakota? I don't, I don't see him on my lineup of people, but I'm assuming he's there. The board had a question about your possible storage of oil. Mr. Frankowitz said you do not intend to store oil on the premises and that your trucks will usually come back empty, and some of the board members are concerned that you would have trucks with some oil in them sometimes. And would you just speak to the board about that, what your business plan is, what you're, you know, what you are realistically expecting to be in the trucks? Will they be in that building if they are housed? Will they be housed in the building overnight? You know, things like that. If you could share with us. There's some concern about the possibility of contamination of the wetlands and the, and the North River.
Yes, the, the truck, the intent of the building is to be able to store the truck. Right now, we only have one truck, but the, the plan is to get a second truck. And the building just needs to be big enough to store both trucks inside. And also, the, within the shop area, I plan on having the floor burned, so it can contain oil if the trucks do spring a leak. That way, you know, we'll contain it within the building and be able to clean it up within the building.
Okay. Does it, does any board member have further questions of Mr. Dakota?
Is it possible the trucks could be full of oil when they're parked on the site?
Excuse me?
Is it possible the trucks would be full of oil when they're parked on site overnight?
Yes, but they, it is possible the truck could be full of oil. Typical gallons is 2,500 gallons. And the goal is to, is to burn the garage area so that it can, it can contain at least that amount of oil.
So it would be 2,500 gallons, not the two trucks at 2,500 gallons for 5,000 gallons?
Well, I mean, statistically wise, having, having both trucks lose all their contents
I know.
is unrealistic, so.
Unless there's a fire and explosion. But you never know. That's a problem with life. You have to plan for those contingencies.
Yeah. No, that's true. No, it's stranger things have happened. So I would, we would have to figure out how high a burn would have to be to create a 5,000-gallon containment. My guess is it's going to be upwards of eight inches tall.
So your plan is to install that or to do that procedure, then, the burn?
Yeah, the, the concrete floor within the garage area will have a burn built into it.
Does that have to be approved by anybody at the state, or how does that work?
I don't believe so. I, I worked for a company many years ago, and we just, on the advice of insurance adjusters and things like that, we would burn the buildings based on the gallons of chemicals within the building.
So the insurance company would require it?
Right, because, I mean, right now, he parks his truck right on Route 4. I mean, that's probably more dangerous than putting the trucks down in the building.
I have seen his trucks. So are there further questions? Any board members?
Bonnie, I don't have a question per se, but I'm wondering if we aren't getting beyond what the variance is for. What we're here to do, we're here to look at whether or not we approve the rear setback. It's nothing to do with the oil storage or how close he is to the river or any of those things. He's also going to be going before the planning board. And having been on the planning board, I can tell you that they will be scrutinizing all of this. And they do have conservation people on the board, so nothing is going to escape them. We're simply looking at the rear setback.
And how variance might affect the public interest. I mean, once again, whatever we're looking at, you know, we can't be hurting the public interest by approving a proposal. It's our job.
Peter, the variance is for the setback. That's what we are supposed to address.
No, the variance is for a company that has oil to be doing a development around wetlands in the North River. So we have to consider what that variance is going to be used for. Is that a danger to the public interest? That's a question we have to answer with, with every one of these requests. Does it hurt the public interest? Does it hurt the public interest by granting a variance? That's our question.
Are there any members of the public here, Joanna? I'm just, I'm just going to open the floor up to anybody who either wants to speak in favor or against this request. Can you hear me, Joanna?
Yes, no public is here.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, just in response to Peter's comment.
Go for it, Raylene.
Oh, okay. I, I agree with both Teresa and Peter and that, yes, the immediate question is the variance. The associated question is the public interest. Is it reasonable to, if we approve to, and saying that this is going to the planning board, to make a suggestion to the planning board that it discuss the question of wetlands and river safety?
You won't have to suggest that. I can tell you they will be all over it.
Yes, we can make that assumption that they will be all over it and I don't disagree with you.
No, I know they will be. I will, they will be. I have been on that committee. I sat on that committee for years. You have Ed Beal and you have Susan Mooney, who are both very much into looking at all of this.
I am, I am well aware of that. Nevertheless, I'm not asking about the people who are involved. I'm asking about the organizational structure. The communication structure between commissions and boards of the town. That is it reasonable that one would say, we have taken this step. We recommend, we suggest that as this is reviewed by the next step, that this particular issue be reviewed. It's a procedural question, not an individual question.
Okay, gotcha.
Are you looking for an answer to the question?
I think it would be a very useful answer, not only for tonight, but in general, as we discuss these things and look at the balance between issuing, focusing on only the variance, but also focusing on the variance in the context of the public interest. And I'm not stating that as a specific to this. I think that this particular issue has, has raised a very reasonable question that would be useful to be answered for, for current and future reference.
Well, it's, it's an interesting question, but since every case that comes before us is unique. I don't know that you can apply a
But as a procedural
I'm not going to say I'm open to telling the planning board what I think they should be paying attention to with every
I'm not open to telling them what they should be attending to. I'm making a suggestion. I'm, I'm asking a procedural question and maybe we need to address that at a later date. But I think it's an important issue to consider.
Yes, and I want to point out that if something does go wrong after we approve the site and oil leaks, leaks into the North River, then everybody's going to say, what were they thinking letting oil be stored around these wetlands next to the North River? They'll think we were negligent. So that's why we need to ask these questions. We can't just say, oh geez, I, I guess oil can leak from these trucks into the river.
But there already is, but Peter, there already is in the back of this piece of property. Isn't there a garage or something that
Yeah, so should we add to the problem? Should we multiply the problem? And why can't he find a better place to park his oil trucks is my main question. This is the place he picks to park his oil trucks in the middle of wetlands next to the North River? Does not seem negligent. Can you find a better place to park your trucks to protect our public interest?
It's a piece of land he owns, Peter.
Yeah, but surrounded by wetlands and a river. If something happens to that oil business and contaminates the river, we are, we are liable. We are responsible for this decision we're making.
The planning board will be responsible.
No, the ZBA is being asked to grant a variance to allow this business next to the river. That's our question. That's the question we have to answer. Is it wise to let an oil company have a variance to be next to the, the North River? And I don't think that's very wise myself, but I would make a motion to approve the variance, subject to having no oil stored on-site. Somebody want to second that?
I would like to ask Mr. Dakota if that is a possible, not reasonable, a possible solution.
That there'd be no oil stored?
Yes.
On the site. It's not, it's, it's not realistic that a truck is going to be completely empty when we bring it back to pocket.
But it will be parked in the garage when it is not, when it comes back, it will be parked in the garage with a berm underneath to absorb any oil leakage.
Correct.
It will not be parked in a driveway.
It will not be parked in a driveway.
Okay.
I appreciate the steps he wants to take, but we read the news every week about something causing an oil leak, whether it's a pipeline or a truck or whatever. So let's say that even the best, best-prepared plans, if you put in a business in the wrong location, you're asking for trouble. So.
Okay, are we ready to, I'm ready to hear a motion. I don't, I don't hear any more constructive questions being asked.
But I move we grant this variance, subject to the trucks being less than half-full when stored on-site. There's a compromise. That way you don't have to worry about it being empty, just less than half-full. So if there is a spill, at least it'll be a small one. 5,000 gallons isn't a small one.
Peter, that's two trucks leaking at once. I mean, that's
Well, there's a fire and an explosion, Terry. Then those trucks, all that 5,000 gallons will be in the North River and we'll, we look foolish. Now you have to think, you have to look forward. Is this in the public interest?
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
A motion has been made and seconded that we approve this variance request, subject to the, the oil trucks being at least half-empty when they're parked on the site.
I would like to amend that emotion. I think that in the interest of what's realistic, rather than having each truck half-full, that assumes a 2,500 gallon, that we state a 2,500 gallon, so that one may be three-quarter full and one one-quarter full. And I would like to ask Mr. Dakota if that makes more sense.
That's, that's very reasonable.
I think that's a fair compromise.
Terry, are you willing to amend your motion?
It wasn't my motion.
I mean
Yeah, I would amend my motion.
I, I want to hear it stated so that Joanna can get it down and be sure to include the case number and everything else.
Okay, regarding case number 20-010-VA, application from Eric Dakota, owner of Deke Fuel, requesting a variance from Article 2E2A1 with the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit development of a vacant lot in a commercial industrial zone with a two-car garage and office within 100 feet from the rear boundary line while maintaining 100 feet from all property lines. On the property at 248 Old Turnpike Road, Tax Map 16, Lot 36, Sub Block A, that we approve that motion with a maximum of 2,500 gallons of oil being stored on-site between the two trucks.
Is there a second?
I second. Oh, doesn't Terry have to s-
No, the motion He didn't jump up.
I will second it.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the request before us tonight, subject to condition that no more than 2,500 gallons of oil be stored on-site in the two trucks meant to be parked there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, I will call you by name.
Um, Bonnie, you said park there, parked in the
The motion, I'm merely restating the general idea. The motion was made by Peter. That's what Joanna has, correct? Would you read us the motion? Do that easily? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I had to unmute myself. So his motion was restating the notice, then he approves the notice. Approving the motion with a maximum of 2,500 gallons to be stored on-site between the two trucks.
That's the wording.
Can I amend the motion to make it clearer? I know it's, it's distressing, but it is vague as stated, parked on-site. We have talked to date about being parked in the garage with a berm.
Yes.
That was what the original statement by the applicant overnight. I just
Peter, do you wish to redo your motion?
Yes, if you just want to add at the end to be parked in, in the garage.
Say the whole thing. Start all over. And make sure you get everything you want in it this time, please.
No, it would be everything written there and then just after it says Sub Block A, where the maximum of 2,500 gallons between the two trucks stored overnight on-site in the garage.
So a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion as finally stated? Actually, we're not going to do it though. We're going to do a roll call because we're on Zoom. Terry?
Yeah, I vote no.
Peter?
Aye, yes.
Teresa? Can't see you.
I, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't even, is this acceptable to the applicant? I mean.
He did say yes, he would accept the 2,500. Said they would be parked in the garage with a berm underneath.
Mr. Dakota, do you, can you answer that just quickly in the middle of this vote?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to you?
That is acceptable. I had already planned on berming the garage area. We'll just make sure that, that it can contain at least 2,500 gallons.
Thank you. Teresa, did you, would you care to vote now?
I thought aye.
And the chair votes aye. Oh, Raylene, I forgot you, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, did you get that, Joanna? Mr. Dakota, your request has been granted. That's one condition, that you maintain 2,500 gallons or less. What happened? Geez, I'm cruel.
Screen sharing's off, that's all.
Hey.
I just turned my, I just stopped sharing my screen.
Okay, so now I can't see anything, but all the people disappeared, so I thought I was somehow this is, this is probably the worst techno, technical, technological Zoom meeting we've had. So, anyway, Joanna, did you get that, um, vote?
I did.
Four to one.
Yes.
Were I for, okay. So I'm, I am bound to tell you, Mr. Dakota, that you have 30 days. Is that the right number of days, Joanna, because we
Yes.
30 days in which anyone in the world can appeal our decision. So if you begin your project before the 30 days and there is an appeal that prevails, you will have, you know, got some, you will have some money on the line. You may start it before 30 days. I'm just warning you that there's a possibility of an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
That's true of every decision we make, in, in whatever direction we make it. So just want you to know that, okay? And
Okay, I understand.
All right, and you have
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can't see anybody for some reason. Any evidence of this Zoom meeting on my screen anywhere.
We can still see and hear you, Bonnie.
Well, okay, good. I, I just feel kind of like I'm in the closet, you know, and the door's closed and you guys are having a meeting out there. I keep looking for it, but I
That might be a better place to be, Bonnie.
I know we still have a couple of other items of business.
Bonnie, Mr. Dakota is still on. Does he have any additional questions or concerns? Or where are we? I just don't want him to have to feel like he has to stay on. If he doesn't, he's welcome to because it's an open
Anyone can stay. He doesn't have to leave. He can do what he, come or go as he But you know, your, your request has been granted. You will receive, by the way, you will receive a, does he receive a written letter, Joanna? Notice of decision, I mean. Can you hear me? See?
Looks like she dropped out.
She can't
Yes, Bonnie, she does, she does send a notice and it is posted.
Okay, so it'll be on the town website and you will receive a, a letter from us, which Joanna does kindly for us. Notifying you of our decision, you know, a formal notification.
Thank you.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so here I am. I, my screen is absolutely empty of any kind of Zoom. Oh, wait, let me, there's the Zoom icon. Let me put, here I am. I'm back. Okay, Joanna, our next order of business, is it the minutes? Do you have an update for us? We have bylaws and rules of procedure.
I think we've lost Joanna.
Yes, Joanna sent me a text and said she lost everyone and minutes were sent out ahead of time and so were the bylaw edits.
So does anyone wish to speak too? Let's, let's take the bylaw edits up first.
Are there a lot of them?
Is everyone ready to vote on those? We've had those for quite a while, actually. Where's Raylene? I don't see you.
Right here. My question is, was the comment about the, something came across today about the bylaws. Peter suggested?
Referring to
What was
That was already addressed in his was that he would, wanted people to view the sites before meeting if possible.
Right.
Yes, strongly recommended was the language we decided on.
Okay, so is that on for a vote tonight as part of the bylaws?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure. I saw that on the, on the information and I just wasn't sure where it fit, but that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just so y'all know, Joanna says she's lost internet, so we can finish up the meeting, but we need to let her know, Bonnie, what happens.
I've got my pencil right here. So we're discussing the bylaws.
And most of those changes, we're just changing him or her to the generic whatever, whatever Raylene suggested. And then the suggestion from Peter. I, I currently will move that we approve the edits to the bylaws as stated.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the bylaws as last stated. All those in favor? I can't see any of you, so I'm just going to say all those in favor. I'm going to have to have you, I'm going to take you I'm going to have to have you, I'm going to take you one at a time, and you're going to have to say it, because I can only see Terry now. Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Teresa, I can see you now.
Yes.
Raylene?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's five yes.
All right, thank you.
Zero, no. Well, don't be so, don't be so the center of attention, Peter, the bylaws are more than about your one suggestion. Now the minutes. I have the copy of them in front of me, Teresa, can you give us the date of the minutes that we're going to vote on tonight?
I, let's, don't, let's see. Joe. Fortunately, Joanna didn't put the date on the agenda, so I don't have that. Could you tell me what the date is, Bonnie, and I will move for it?
I don't have it on my information either. So I think we'll just postpone it, it's not super important that we approve the minutes on, in any particular fashion, I don't think. Correct me if I'm wrong. Let's just save that for next month, because I don't have any information about it either.
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me either.
See how important Joanna is? We cannot function with- Okay, so we've, we have dealt with all the the items that we can deal with us that are before us, except that Joanna sometimes has some members update, and maybe she has nothing tonight. Oh, there she is.
Just in time to be able to update that for you guys.
We skipped the minutes, nobody has a date for them.
Oh, you're not supposed to have any minutes.
Oh, so that's not- Okay, perfect.
Unfortunately, I've been so bogged down with everybody else's stuff. But you have another case coming to you, so be prepared for that, hopefully tomorrow, at the latest Thursday.
And I want to have a quick discussion about our last case, I think it was our last case, which was a a very, a variance for frontage on a private road in order to rebuild the person's house. That case, do you all remember that one? So, I've talked with a couple of you about this, I did some research that night about the charges of a zoning board, the authority of a zoning board, and so forth. And I have come to the conclusion, and I will be expressing this in the future if we get similar cases, that all of that road frontage as far as lots that have already been improved, so they got a building permit at some point, they built a house, and the guy wanted to rebuild it. And in fact, as I remember, this is not really relevant to my reasoning, but he was improving the setbacks of his existing house and putting in a new septic system, which is a great thing for the lake. I believe though, those road frontage areas are grandfathered. Then that people do not need a variance from the road frontage in order to get a permit to rebuild their house or fix their house. I may not think the same thing about a new house going in, but an existing house, I think a person has a right to rebuild. And we as a board are charged with interpreting the zoning ordinance and with solving, resolving issues of grandfathering. So we can't, that is within our authority to do. I don't see how we can say that any of those people who own property, improve property, don't have rights to maintain their property. It just doesn't seem just to me. And I think their road frontage was grandfathered before we had zoning. So I wanted to throw that out to the board in case any of you had thoughts about it, or different ideas, or thought there was a better way of dealing with it. We didn't used to receive these kinds of requests, because apparently the last building inspector thought we were grandfathered too, which I didn't know till I raised the question with Joanna. Anyway, Raylene, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm a little confused. I'm relatively new, you've all been on it a long time, you've dealt with this issue for years. But you, let me, do I understand that there's supposed to be a 50-foot setback? The current building has a 50-foot setback. The new building that they want to build, they're asking for a variance to a 20-foot setback. We should automatically approve all of those grandfathered, because the original thing was grandfathered?
I was speaking only about the road frontage, however-
No, no, I'm talking about the road frontage too. I'm also talking about the road frontage.
May I point out to you, you know, you're talking about setbacks. You were talking about setbacks.
All right, I'm sorry, I used the wrong-
Lots of record, they're called, most of those lots of record have a special section of the zoning ordinance that allows them to have 20-foot setbacks. They don't have to come to us for that. That's, that's within the zoning ordinance already.
Then why are you raising the issue of grandfathering frontage?
You know, I, excuse me, Raylene, I think she was just talking about existing homes where people are doing improvements versus, you know, new homes on these lots. It's not something, I know we've asked the planning board to look into it, but I haven't heard anything back. But all those lake lots, those, you know, 60 by 100 lots, those were not originally intended or approved to be house lots, those were camp lots. So today, we have a two-acre house zoning rule, which I think, I don't think we should be granting all these variances for new construction and substandard lots. I think that's not the intent of the ordinance or the original subdivision.
I was trying to clarify what Bonnie said about the road frontage issues that we shouldn't be addressing road frontage, because that has been grandfathered. Was that a correct interpretation of what you said, Bonnie?
Pretty close.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little confused that, are you suggesting that they can build the house within 10 feet, you know, right up on the road? Because it's been grandfathered, and we shouldn't even be, what I hear you saying is we shouldn't be addressing the road frontage, because it's grandfathered, and we should leave it alone.
What I am saying is, I do not think that those people need to get a variance about the road frontage, that's what the case was about, it wasn't about setbacks or-
That they shouldn't even have to ask for a variance.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think that the, we as a board should be granting variances for road frontage that's pre-existing, that predates zoning. Those people were given permits to build buildings before we had a zoning ordinance in Nottingham. We now have an ordinance that allows them very special, relaxed setbacks. But that was not my issue, my issue was the road frontage. There's the road, that's the only way to get to their house. The town will let them build on it before the town had zoning. And I don't think they should, they don't need a variance, because their road frontage was grandfathered. You cannot pass a zoning ordinance that goes retroactive.
And because the original ordinance did not say anything about road frontage from the road frontage to the house, that we shouldn't be requiring that?
I'm not saying anything about setbacks, you're putting some-
I'm not saying front back, I'm not-
You're saying 50 feet from the road, that's a setback.
I know, but you, okay, never mind.
I'm only, I'm only saying-
I'm confused about what it is you're saying about the road frontage issue, I don't know what-
Let me give you an example that might make it-
That would appreciate that.
I bought or inherited a house down at Lake Patuka Way. Where, by the way, having grown up on 2,000 acres up north on a 28-acre pond, I wouldn't live for all the tea in China, all those people crowded together. However, those people bought lots and built on them, sold them, sold them, passed them down to their kids, whatever they did, a person now owns, say it's me, I own a house there. My house is in bad repair, and I want to fix it up, and maybe I want to turn it a little bit on the lot and improve. Maybe I don't even meet the setbacks that the ordinance requires now for those small lots. They, these houses were built before there was an ordinance, there were no requirements about anything.
I understand, I don't understand the frontage, what your point is about the frontage issue. Are you talking about how far the house should be from the front, or are you, I don't understand what you're talking about, the frontage issue. You're talking about the width of the frontage, that instead of being 200 feet, it's only 100 feet? I haven't seen the point about-
Okay, let me, let me go back to the zero. Erase everything in your head.
Okay.
I have a lot with 50 feet of frontage on White's Grove Road. White's Grove Road is a private road.
Yes, I understand all that, what about 50 feet?
I do not believe that I would need a variance to rebuild my house on that lot. Because the house was there before there was any zoning rules, that's why it is so crowded down there.
Well, as long as they're staying within the footprint, they don't need a variance, do they?
They needed a variance just for the road frontage, Peter, that's what this guy was in front of us for. It had nothing to do with the footprint, and that isn't, wasn't even before us, what was before us was this guy had 47 feet of road frontage on a private road.
I thought he was expanding the footprint of his house, and that's why he needed a variance.
No, I don't think so.
Can I interject?
Yes.
Yes, in fact, he was not, he wasn't expanding his footprint, but he wasn't in the same footprint, because he conformed to the setbacks, so he moved it just a smidge. But he was within the setbacks, same size house, just moved it, so he was conforming to the same setbacks. But because he wasn't in the old footprint, which was against the setbacks, he had to go before you. If he built within the same exact footprints, not conforming in the setbacks, but like as was before, he would not have had to go before you.
I see.
Because that's what the zoning ordinance says, is that pre-existing non-conforming can build and rebuild in the same footprint without getting a variance, that's the only, one of the few exceptions that are in our zoning ordinance. And the difference between a frontage that, that Bonnie is referring to, and a frontage on a town road or a state road, is that our, the definition of frontage says it has to be a class five or better road. So you can have 300 feet on a road, but it's not even, but it's not a class five or better road, and you don't have frontage. And that's why you're seeing all these cases, because there are a lot of the camp roads, or the plastics roads, that have houses or lots that people want to build on, and they have to go before you, because they don't have frontage, by the definition of frontage. They have a portion of their parcel that goes along a class six road, but that's not frontage.
Why do they have to ask for a variance if there's not frontage?
Because our zoning ordinance says that your, that to build on a parcel, you have to have 200 feet or more of frontage.
But that's only a class five road or better.
Right. Which is why they're going to you for variance.
Okay.
Is it clear now?
Well, it's clear to me that I was, I was mistaking, I thought they all had to come before us. No, you're just saying because he turned the house a little bit.
Correct.
Same size house, but he went, he took it from this and put it like that, so it would meet the setbacks.
Correct, yeah.
Setbacks for his zone.
Correct.
Sorry.
So, but you are still seeing cases that you have expressed that you would rather not be seeing, because they're a pre-existing non-conforming parcel, and that being that they are on a class five or better, I mean, a class six road. And so that means it's a pre-existing non-conforming. That, that alone makes it pre-exist, I mean, automatically have to go to you guys, but if you're saying if they're, if they meet all the other requirements, except for the fact that they're on a class six road, you don't want to see them, is that correct?
So you're not talking about the size of the frontage, you're talking about the road that, frontage? The type of road that it is on, is that the point, Bonnie?
Yeah, I was talking about road frontage.
Okay, but you're not talking about the length of the road frontage, you're talking about the type of road upon which the property fronts?
Well, I think they usually have to request both, a variance from both, do they, Joanna?
If they have less than 200 feet, then they would be requesting a variance from it as well, yes. It would include how long their parcel is on the class six road in their variance request.
A private road.
I would like to go back and suggest that Bonnie has raised an issue, that each of us go back and look at it, and clarify exactly Bonnie's issue and the zoning ordinance, and rediscuss at the next meeting.
I agree. Motion to adjourn.
Does that meet, I mean, you raised the issue, Bonnie, it sounded like that's what you wanted to-
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out for people to think about.
So I think we should think about it and come back and discuss next week.
Somebody already has a house down there, why do they have to come to us for road frontage? The town already let them build. They just let them build before zoning. It just seems like an unnecessary step, that's expensive, and it takes up our time. When in fact, they were given permission to do it before zoning. When they got a building permit, when the town taxed them on this property. They've been paying taxes, suddenly you know, we get brought into the mix. Maybe I'm incorrect in that, Joanna, if they just want to rebuild on the same footprint, do they not have to come before us, even if they have 47 feet of road frontage?
Correct, if they want to build in the exact same footprint, they do not need to go to you. It's in, it's one of the exceptions in non-conforming, in the non-conforming section of the zoning ordinance.
I think maybe-
They can go up, but not out.
We should all review the non-conforming section of the zoning ordinance, as well as research. You know, what is grandfathered? What constitutes grandfathering, and what, what about a property should be grandfathered?
And the term to look for is actually not pre-existing non-conforming, not grandfathered, we remove that entirely.
I don't care what the, I don't care what the planning board calls it, that's an old term, and I'm going to keep using it. It means, your use, yes, now may be in violation of the zoning ordinance, but it was like that before there was a zoning ordinance, that's my point.
I understand, I'm just saying, if you're going to be doing research, you need to look for the term pre-existing non-conforming, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Not grandfathering, pre-existing non-conforming, is that your point, Joanna?
That's all, yeah, I wasn't, I'm trying, not trying to pick up-
Correct languages that I'm looking for.
That's exactly what I was pointing out.
The legislature clarified it.
So we, we as a board are authorized, empowered to interpret the zoning ordinance and to declare what is grandfathered and what isn't. So we can overrule the building inspector on that particular now called pre-existing non-conforming, on those grandfathered things, if we wish to, or if we think it's the right thing to do.
Well, the building inspector issues building permits for what he thinks is allowable. So the only things we see from the building inspectors is when he says no. So we're not overseeing what he's approving, we're only getting the things he's not approving.
Joanna, is that, Bonnie, whoever, so we only need to look at this in terms of the town zoning ordinance, not the state?
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying educate-
I'm just asking-
Educate yourself about the question, which might include the word grandfathering when you get out of Nottingham jargon, that's all.
Okay, so we need to do both, I just wanted to make sure, where do I get the information I need to be prepared to discuss this issue next time we meet?
I got mine off an attorney's treatise on the powers of a zoning board, so he used the term grandfather, but maybe it was written before, suddenly words go in and out of vogue. I know what grandfathering means, and if you want to call it pre-existing non-conforming, it's pretty much the same thing.
All the words are changing nowadays, I don't know what's politically correct. I should just keep my mouth shut.
Want to know where I look, that's all, thank you, Joanna, I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I second Peter's motion.
I do too.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn tonight's meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Good night.
All right, thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night, stay cool and safe. To the families.
The program is working better than it was in the beginning, is it? Because the internet is less people on it at 8:20?
Could be, I don't know.
I think a lot of, so many people are working from home now.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joanna.
All right, thank you, take care. Bye.